Do we need to get Drogy over here?
Really, thanks.
Quite a good reflection in that TV screen.
It's recording. Bill's head.
I knew it was funny.
Very good.
It's rolling up there now.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. Skylar Community Schools in this partnership with the parents, students, and the community is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in global society. Notice of the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice of the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. The copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted against that wall in front of the meeting room. I would like to welcome everybody to our new site for the board meetings. And so it's been exciting, unite. Unfortunately, I didn't advertise it last week, so we probably, you know, otherwise we would have had a lot more people here. Anyhow, we'll go forward and I'll look for approval of the consent agenda. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Anything to call out on there? Pretty good. Sally?
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes. All right. Public forum, I don't see any people that would like to speak publicly, but if we have some guests that arrive and would like to make some comments, we will limit their comments to five minutes. Do we have a student rep report?
No.
I didn't. All right, we'll move on to motion on the ESU seven.
I made a motion to approve the 2021 contract with ESU seven for special education.
Sir, a second?
I will second it.
The move and seconded, discussion?
It's our contract for special services for speech therapy, for psychology. There's, there's an administrative cost in there for those two. They don't have a rate in there because they have to go by the state rate. So it's just a contract between us and them for services that we need.
And it's only for the services rendered, it's not fixed.
Right, so if, if at the end of the year, we say that we need less time here and more time here, we can adjust through there. It's just saying it well.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Okay, Sally, call the roll.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Sally, do you have that contract to be signed, ESU two?
I gave all everything.
School calendar? I'll move to approve the 2020, 21 school calendar as presented. Sir, a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Just, there's some changes in this next year's calendar, the way that the year falls and one of the things that we did this year when we had a snow day on the day before Thanksgiving, we moved our strategic planning to January, to Martin Luther King Day. And that was pretty, pretty popular. The teachers came back and asked for it again, that we do strategic planning on that day. And, and so that Wednesday before Thanksgiving is a day that they're recommending off so they can travel. There's some families who travel. That was pretty popular with them. Because we lost that half a day in there, we ended up with the end of the year being returning on a Monday for a half a day. And the teachers and the administrators agreed that that was not a very good use of a day to make them come back and put in a half a day when everything's done. One of the things that we have done over the years is that we have moved from three days of pre-service at the start of the year to two days of pre-service. And the tough thing that happens there is that teachers get less time to set up their rooms. And so I did negotiate with them a flex day, and I hate doing it because it's a, it's a stuff for administrators to track. But that sometime in the week before the regular contract, that they get a half a day to come in and set up their room and work in their room. And so it's up to them to make sure that that flex day works. The teachers like that option to have half day to get paid to set up your room. And so that was one change. We have another change in there for the tech fair. This will be our fourth year of a tech fair. And one of the issues is the afternoon with students, it gets long. But in order for us to be able to get colleges and businesses here, coming for half a day doesn't make a lot of sense. And so like this year, we had a student day on a Wednesday and then had them come back the following week for professional development for teachers. Trying to contract people to do that is difficult and it's more expensive to do it that way. And so we're looking at a half a day in the morning for career fair and tech fair for our kids. That afternoon, our staff would have career and tech fair so that our staff would get to see all the colleges and businesses that come in here. Because they're generally gone when we do our staff tech fair. So trying to connect learning to post-high school jobs and the colleges is a more difficult thing, especially for those teachers who aren't at the high school level. So those people will also be able to get to see that. So the tech people made a recommendation following the thought exchange to really look at how they're doing that day. And hopefully open that up more to. And with that, that Tuesday night, we have, we didn't have any high school conflict with activities. And so moving parent-teacher conferences to Tuesday night and to Wednesday all day. And it gave them Thursday, Friday for fall, fall break. So it just, there's some things in this calendar we're going to try for the first time. And I think that the Teachers Association was, was behind those changes. And it's still 185-day work calendar and 176-student day calendar. So I would recommend that we accept their recommendations.
Do we have to promise that it snows on the day before Thanksgiving too, or just?
You could promise whatever you want, you are the president.
I guess that's true. All right. Any questions with regard to or issues with the layout of the? No. You know, you talked about the tech fair, I guess. And I don't know if any of this has been happening or not, but maybe there's some opportunity for some FAFSA-type representation there. Maybe they have somebody there that might be another component to go into that.
I'm sure there is.
So.
That's, and there's, there's I think one of the things that I need to provide to you guys is all the businesses and the colleges that do come that day. Because there's a lot of outside vendors that come in for that. So, but it's not something that you would probably even know. But it is a college career day for our kids, starting clear at the freshman level, so they can start.
And I guess the reason I bring it up, because I think that's one of the things that maybe scares more of our population too, and all the paperwork that can get generated through college admissions, et cetera. So I just think it's good to talk about that up early and often and help them out.
I guess I would ask the administrators, any, any other comments that I've left off that I should have brought up? Anybody? Going, going, gone? Yeah, Jesse, you good?
You're good.
I thought you were going to bid higher. All right. Sally, go ahead and call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Okay, personnel issues.
I made a motion to approve recommendations and further service for district administrators while in the retirement.
I'll second that motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion among the candidates? Lot of, lot of experienced teachers there and that.
The three early retirees, this is the last year of that policy. However, those who qualify this year are eligible for the remaining years of their, of their four years. That policy will be brought up this summer to the board again. If you want to, if you want to relook at that policy, if you want to put it back in, if you want to amend it. But this is the final year and it will stand for those people who currently qualify, who have turned it down. And I think there's only a couple on that list that, that still have some qualification. So I just want you to notice that Sally's name's not on that list.
Well, again, like I said, just, we do appreciate all their service and the years that they've spent in our system. That having that stability makes a big difference in, in moving programs forward. So hopefully we've got more in the wings willing to step up and be those role models as these have been. So go ahead and call the roll, Sally.
Bobberchuk?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
All right. I would move to approve the new hire recommendations.
Second.
Discussion.
The principals got out early on their, their new hires. And so it makes a huge difference in the quality of candidates that they can pull into the interview and try to land early in the year. Because I was only involved in the two hires of the two principals. We had a team of administrators and a team of teachers from each building who worked at those interviews. They came to consensus on those. It was amazing how close those scores were. The top three were the top three in all of the groups. And we had some great candidates on that list, but the top three sifted to the top. And as a matter of fact, the elementary and the team and the, and the administrators matched exactly on their top three and all three were the same score. So then we had to look at qualifications and certifications and we looked at how they did on the pre-screener. We, we looked at those other things. We're proud to announce Kara Neeson for the elementary principal position. She comes with a pretty extensive background. She has beyond a master's degree, she's got an education specialist degree in special education and she's a school psychologist. And she is a K-12 administrator. So she's got a lot of credentials behind her. She's currently at U-10 Nebraska as their psychologist and special ed director. That's going to be a big loss for them to lose that. Andy Banahan, on the other hand, is like Kara, is also a certified special education endorsement on, on his. He's got a, a middle-level endorsement as well. And, and has, in his career, he's been at Boys Town in Duncan. He's been at Walnut Junior High in Grand Island, understands our population, understands our kids. Will be a great leader in, in our middle school. Background in, he's from Fairbury, Nebraska. He's a little bit taller than the tallest person in this room, he's about six-seven. No, he's not six-eight. I, I think he's six-five, but we didn't have to pay him by the height, so don't, don't worry about it. But has taught physical education, social studies, special education. Just good backgrounds, good, good strengths to that administrative team that bring more, more experience and more education into this arena. So we're impressed with their resumes, with the letters of recommendation. And also they conducted themselves in an interview. We fired questions at them and they found their feet. It's, that's not an easy interview. And they scored well.
Good.
So.
And the administrators that would be having these teachers that are recommended, any comments on them?
Bill and Jesse and.
I'm really, really excited that we have our special ed teacher because there is such a shortage across Nebraska that a lot of like psyching services between kids and teachers. And we have Jennifer Novak and Caitlin Becker. I'm so excited.
At the middle school, we got, after we got our first choices on both of those schools from middle school hired Cassandra Brown for Family and Consumer Sciences. I mean, hate to see Mrs. Hanson, Mrs. Polda, hate to see her leave, but Mrs. Hanson did a good job of giving us, giving us a recommendation of this young lady and then a cool candidate, this weird dude, Alden. And she was the top and she accepted. Offered George. Same thing with Ryan Baldwin. He was our top choice and he chose us. Had a lot of questions because, you know, he is good and he knows he can ask those questions. So we told him, told everything and he was in it, so feel real good about that.
Those are instrumental applicants have experience and that's.
That's what I'm going to ask.
It's great that we have awesome experience. Usually we get to take young kids coming out of college. So these two had some great experience and Mr. Nibalski worked at Omaha Mary and so he's looking forward to getting into the public school system. Before that, and he said, can I have a day to think about it? Then ten minutes later he calls back, no, I'll just take it. This is a good sign, dude, like that.
I can give you a compliment that I got this morning when I took those brochures over to UPS store. The lady in there said, I heard you hired Mr. Nibalski. And I said, yeah, she goes, oh, what an amazing hire. Well, he has Skylar ties. So apparently his mother or somebody is, is, is from Skylar. And so there's, but, but this lady's just raved about his family and so anyway, yeah, no. Yeah. So. Yeah, so we're excited about where we're going with our music programs. And we hate to lose two guys that are in there, but, but these two guys are, they're going to pick it up, so.
Good. What about Carrie Leirman? Anything?
Carrie is.
Hire today.
Yep, we got her. Love, I think pretty much is bringing her to the area. I think they live in, how old is she? He's working in Pilgrimage, he's industrial tech, I believe up there. So it's worked out great. We've met her, you know, she came in and loved the school.
When Bill said love brought her to this area, I really thinking bad things right away. I don't think so, Bill.
I was thinking the new truck stop, what? Oh, well.
Okay.
Well, good to hear, you know, again, lots of good things said and, you know, we'll see what we have when the rubber hits the road next fall. But it sounds like the committees did a, did a good job of vetting things out and getting the best applicants for us, so.
I will make a comment. The teacher committees were thrilled that they, that they were, that their choices were honored. It just so matched. And so from the middle school to the elementary, those committees were validated and they liked the process. And that's half the battle is, is making sure that, I mean, if we had have been so far apart, it would, it would have been a tougher sell. But we were right on the money with them, so. They, they did a good job.
With Kara Neeson's last name, does she have family ties to this, this area at all?
She's from Nebraska City. Actually coached her for her teaching. She lives in Austin, Iowa, not in Nebraska City. Her husband's in West Point. I have the same thing.
All right, Sally, whenever you're ready, call the roll.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Bobberchuk?
Yes. All right. Committee meetings. We have several things to discuss as you can see on the list of things in front of you. So we'll just plan on as far as the different groups, we'll kind of get together here afterwards to see what dates we can come up with to, on, based on your committees to make sure we can have adequate discussion on the items and try to move some things forward. We will plan on meeting before, definitely at least once before the next meeting. So in any of these things, we may not resolve everything, of course, but we're going to definitely have a meeting prior to the next board meeting.
So if we send out a doodle poll to you, to your email, unless you pick sometimes, we're going to try to keep these committee meetings reasonable, okay? If evenings work the best, if, you know, if, we'll just put some times in there and wherever it works for you, we'll work our schedule to try to make sure that you get involved. Part of the reason for this is that, is that in, when we, when Rich appointed those committees, we talked about, about that the community structure for this board really didn't meet that much. And there were some recommendations that were coming to the board and we felt like we needed more discussion with the board prior to them coming, so.
And I, I think some of the board members too expressed concern, hey, I really was thinking that I'm going to be more involved with certain things too. And, and it's, you know, we have our role and, you know, policy is definitely one that we have not been diligent on. And, you know, we building in grounds and we always meet with negotiations and things of that nature. But there's things we should be discussing more frequently than we are, definitely. And, and so, yeah, it's definitely something we want to move forward this year and do a better job in that aspect, so.
Okay, so I'll work with Sally and Sally will work to try to get some dates lined up with us for those committees. And we do want to work around your schedules to make sure that, that we can hit. And if we can do, if we can do two things back to back, we can get them off the, the schedule. They don't all have to be done before April, but some of them need to be done before April, so.
And again, from, from participation or participants, do we, as far from administration side, do we have others other than you, or is it just you?
Oh, no, my Dave will be curriculum.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, so that's all, make sure we're.
Whoever's involved will be, so. So the administrators love Saturday, Sunday meetings, so I.
Me too. Excellent.
Saturday mornings, right?
Okay, six o'clock.
All right.
Okay, I'll work with Sally and she'll work with you, how's that?
Wonderful.
She's way better than me at that. Okay, we're down to.
Down to principal reports. And and director report, so I guess a good thing, Mr. Dave, Dr. Dave.
Oh, sorry.
I told you, if you put him in the back, he's going to fall asleep. It's after six o'clock.
Just watched the showcase going on right now and I watched Colin perform and so it looks like they've got a good thing going on down there.
Excellent, excellent. One good thing going on, what's one good thing? Come on.
It's Friday.
It's not Friday.
It's my Thursday night. No, but I don't know. Things seem to be going well. Teachers are keeping positive and looking forward to a break. I just wanted to kind of say thank you to the school board for allowing my dual language teachers to attend the NAVI last week. It's one of the few things that we can go to that's very specific directly toward dual language programs. So it's good not only for them to be able to see what they're doing, that's amazing. Because when you talk to other programs, you're like, oh, we do that, oh, we do that. But then they also were able to bring home a lot of really good tools. A couple of online things that we'll be able to use. But if you haven't read their notes, I put a little bit in there from each of the teachers that came back. But more than several times, the teachers were just so thankful that you guys sent them. And they all felt like it was well worth their time and just felt like it was really good, so.
Good, so from a growth perspective, you believe we're where we, I guess where we started the, I'll just, you know, it's just your opinion.
Yeah.
Where we started the year and where we are now, have we grown to the level we want? Or do we see things at conferences that says, oh, gosh, you know, if we'd have known this, we'd have, it could have been here, you know, I guess.
I think it kind of goes both ways. So there's things that we are doing that we're just right on point with. But there's little things that when you haven't taught dual language before, so like doing the cross-culture thing when you're teaching the kids a word here and a word here, rather than keeping them so separate, bringing them together so the kids aren't learning. Or like the, what they were talking about when you're learning some of the letters in Spanish, it's the same as the one in English, so you don't need to teach it twice. Well, none of us had thought about that. And so just some time saver things like that, you know, but if you've never done it, you know, and there's nowhere around here to go get training. So you have to go somewhere like that to hear those kinds of things. But I would say we're 80% of where we need to be, but maybe 70. And, but this will give us that room to grow. You know, I had two new people on the program this year that had never taught it before. So Ron and Guadalupe have a a break because this is their second year. But yeah, I think there's always room for growth, but I feel like this was a really good.
Yeah, saw a lot of good comments from them in their, in their notes.
The teachers were very willing to even help like with us other teachers that have ELL students. You know, the resources that they get, it's, it's great, you know? Yeah, we have a great community out there. And I, we took ELL teachers as well for the middle and the high school. And I think that was their comment too, just knowing what they're doing, that's good, but what they could bring back. No, Joey's not here, but really good, very solid comments.
I know my wife said validated a lot of the things that she was doing, but also a person thinks to bring back. Okay, let's try and get this done to just bolster what they were doing.
Are no, are the starting point, like what should your next step be?
Right.
I can tell you from a parent standpoint, my daughter's made leaps this year. It's incredible.
Awesome.
I read at the snip that they're about little sponges, that, that's what they are, they're just little sponges, they just suck it all right in.
And that's one of the programs we're looking into and it's, it's just vocabulary, like that's what it focuses on. But I'm, I'm glad you have a daughter in there. It's a good, it's good when we have someone who is firsthand in what we're doing, so.
You know, one of my two good things that I'd really like to share is Mr. Andy Banahan coming to work with me next year. Really excited about that. That process that we went through to hire was intensive. It took some, but there's no more important process than getting good people. And I think we got a really good guy there. Same thing with our, our two hires at the middle school for Family and Consumer Science and Fan. Those are usually some places where you can have shortages, but we had good tools and we got our top candidates in more schools. And I feel fantastic that, again, you can't really replace people, but we. And I feel fantastic that, um, again, you can't really replace people, but we relearned what we're doing. So I'm really excited about that.
I had two things also. One is personal and one is school. Personal one is, uh, my granddaughter called up there today, zoomed and talked. And she says, don't you just love school? It's the best thing. She's a kindergartner, so she's, I wish all our kids kept that enthusiasm. We just kind of listened to that. Second thing is we had four older graduates graduate this week. And two of them hugged me and said, thanks for not giving up on me or letting me give up on myself. They said, I made it. Took me three, four years past what I supposed to, but I made it. And they're excited to be in the ceremony of graduation. It makes you feel good if you're doing something.
That's awesome. Michelle?
Lots of good things. Um, it's been, it was fun to have this kind of help support last week with the everyone hiring and, um, just to be a support to Jesse to, because, um, my goal is to lead the job as well as I can for all of our, our, our kids and our staff. Most importantly for him and his staff. And, um, on a personal and professional note, uh, we took our fourth and South Raiders yesterday to David City. And they both opened up with a win over Aquinas. So that was a lot of fun. Um, and both teams had lost to them earlier in the season, so it was fun to wrap that up. And, and anytime, um, girls, it doesn't matter if you're, um, nine or air eighteen, when you beat a rival, it's a lot of fun. And Mr. Zavado and Mr. Burton for coaching.
Ours would be famous literacy grants. It is taking off. I know, you know, we talked briefly about it, but it's a lot of families that, uh, do not speak English. Um, they come in, they work with their children in the classroom. And they kind of learn how the school works. And then the parents themselves receive four hours of English instruction during the weekend. We are just not, uh, I guess we have multiple languages that is in there now. So we're not just Spanish speakers, but, you know, all kinds of different languages in that program is expanding tremendously at the elementary. So, um, hats off to people. Susanna Oliva, Lenny Harbison, Ingrid Rodriguez, Pablo Costa, they're they've really put a lot of time into it and it's, it's really doing good. I mean, it's impressive.
Help refresh me if you would please. So, uh, so this goes for a year with that particular group or does that extend into?
They, they will probably go. That's the hard part, if I think about myself, if I was learning another language. Um, talking to the national headquarters, they're planning on two to three years. And the parents will be, you know, their English will leave far enough along and they'll be able to apply for jobs or won't help them get into like CCC or into different careers, um, which is pretty impressive for, you know, people that have just come to the country or, you know, that have nothing to lean on. And now we're getting them to a place where they're gonna be, you know, successful and be able to take this up a little more. That's, I mean, it's really neat. You guys should stop in and and sit in that program for a day and you'd just be like, wow. At first when we started, you know, we said eight hours a week. I'm thinking, oh, we're never gonna give parents an eight hours a week? Well, now, you know, we're having to look at not accepting people because we have, we literally could fill all time slots of the day in that room. We have people that wanted that program so bad. Um, we have people just come to the elementary for that program. They're bringing their kids there so they can get in.
So, uh, so that's a, is it a daily meet or is it?
Right now, it's on Tuesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday.
From roughly eight, we kind of have breakfast, eight to twelve. And Kim Parsons, she actually, we've contracted with her, so she teaches four hours.
Great.
Oh, yeah, it's impressive.
So this is a three-year family literacy grant that we were awarded, so.
And I would guess at this point, you know, if the way grants work, if they look to renew, there's definitely not renew. They're really impressed in what's going on.
Good. So how many total people are being educated?
Twenty, well, there's supposed to be like twenty-five in each section is our goal to hit the top part. Like I said, we could easily, well, I wouldn't know if we would double it, but if we put different times through the day, I know we could, we could easily hit forty-seven.
Right?
That's a big program in comparison to the other schools that received the grant. They've done a great job.
I suppose it's two things. Uh, parents not only want to learn, but they want to be involved, which is good for me.
Yes.
See their parents involved.
Just the involvement. They, they want to be around their kids as much as possible. And there's, I mean, they truly want it. We have a lady, we have day parents with it. We have day parents at school in the mornings. Um, we have a baby that's just at eight weeks old. But her lady is like, I need to learn. I, I want to learn better for my family. She's trusting, you know, we have some forty.
Say, there's some water in the fridge. Yeah.
They're really putting in the time and the sacrifice. I couldn't say I could do that, but they want it. They want that.
That's, yeah, that's the attitude we gotta have with, you know, not just the parents, the students as well. You know, we have goals, but you have to be driven to, to reach those goals. That's, that's awesome to hear.
I, I invite everyone to make it in on the Tuesdays, which they're wanting to, and stop in.
I have been there. It's really impressive.
It is impressive. Yeah, you're presented.
Yeah.
Right?
I was there a couple of weeks ago. I was really impressed. Really well done. Good atmosphere. Everybody seems to enjoy it. And it was really nice. I was really impressed.
Darling?
Right now, there's so many exciting things going on. I'd love to be in a part of the panel, hiring the assistant principals and principal. I think they're fantastic choices, great fits for our district. I'm, like I said before, super excited that I got my fed teachers and especially the one I taught. I think Jennifer Milock is going to be excellent. I know her work ethic and comes from her mom being a strong special ed teacher and moving finally and almost done with all the boxes. And it's starting to look like an office over there, which is.
I thought she was gonna, the way she's throwing stuff, I thought she was gonna start throwing stuff at us again.
Anyway, I did call and check on them. And then I think my favorite part, even though like last week was crazy, cause half of our staff is there and half came last week. And we were hiring the principal, but Mrs. Hanson always asked me to help interview her, um, kids in Family Consumer Science. It is so much fun. I mean, you act like you don't know them and you go off and shake your head. It is so much fun because I remember them as kindergartners and then we zoom in that grown up role. And it's just amazing how much they've grown and how grown up they can act when they want to. But it's really fun. I love it.
Thanks. Nina?
Well, I wanted to say about the program. Thank you, Bill. Uh, but I also want to recognize that yesterday it was part of the meeting, um, as an update for the coronavirus response. Thank you all the principals, all the administrative team, Dr. Hazing, to take care of our community. That's, that's good. That's, uh, that's a good sign. I mean, that is not only academic, but also take care of family and health and everything. So thank you for doing that and take time on your weekend and your day off. So that's it for me.
Mine turned out to be good, but Saturday didn't seem good. I was actually pretty upset about it. So we were at the youth wrestling district tournament in Fremont. We're right in the middle of it. They just stopped the thing and we had a confirmed case, the Y, everybody out. So they kicked everybody out. Literally between ten minutes, the building was empty. After waiting for an hour, I went for my son to wrestle. I was kind of upset that day. An email today saying that all, everyone in, in his age group that signed up to go to districts is an automatic qualifier to the state.
Oh, cool.
He gets to go to state. Something bad turned good without even breaking a sweat.
Well, comment on, on what Darlie said. I, you know, I, I always am excited to see SCADA graduates returning here, you know, from, you know, families that are invested in the community. That always really excites me. And I guess I'll, I'll just comment on, on this facility. And I, I think I mentioned it to Dr. Hazing and a few people. You know, this decision, just the short timeframe of doing it, you know, made me a little uncomfortable, uh, making that, that decision. I've had more positive unsolicited, uh, comments about this from members of the community than anything else that we've done, which has really surprised me not, you know, not even, you know, just some people just come up and say, uh, that, that was a great thing that, that you guys did. So, um, I, like I said, I was a little uncomfortable, short timeframe, you know, is this the right thing to do? And, and, um, I've seen nothing, but what have I seen here in the response and how quickly it's being put to use? And comments from the, the community has just been overwhelmingly positive.
Uh, a couple of things. One, uh, pretty important, uh, good news from, uh, family side of things. So we will be having another grandchild here in a while. So it's good stuff. That's, that's positive. I know Dave alluded also to the, uh, the, uh, speech, uh, event that's going on. And I really would have liked to seen part of that too. But, uh, I know we've got some, some kids that are, you know, very, uh, potentially making it to the state competition as well. So they got their districts coming up here. So encourage them to, to meet their, or exceed their expectations. Cause that's what it boils down to. What do they want from themselves? You know, cause I, if you're driven, there's nothing, nothing holding you back. So I guess that's all I got.
In absent, in Joe, Dr. Leftall's absence, um, he did submit a priority report today. So I did attach that to your meeting. Um, the administrators that came in yesterday for the, and Nina who came in for the statewide meeting yesterday. There were like three hundred participants in that statewide meeting looking at the state's response to what's happening in schools. And I was pleased that the administrators gave up some time on their Sunday to help put together our response. At this time, our response is what, um, is what East Central tells us to do. And so they're the ones who will determine if we're in school or out of school. And they've got their guidelines that they'll go by. So if you're here in the public, are these guys doing this? It's East Central that will control if we're in school or out of school. Okay, that's the health organization that's responsible for this area.
East Central Health District.
Yep, yep. Because the state works through, through the East Central Health Districts, the Department of Ed works through the ESUs. That's their coalition. And so they're the ones who will put in the requirement. And so when they tell you that you, that you have enough confirmed cases that you need to be out of school, we have to do it. Okay, so it's not the administrator, which I was really, snow days are snow days. I can make a good or a bad decision and hopefully nobody gets hurt by it. But when it comes to health, that's not my bailiwick. I mean, that's not something where I feel comfortable, um, nor do I want the public to think that, that a superintendent is making health decisions, you know, so. But the custodial staff that has worked so hard on this building to try to get it in shape so that we can put forth a professional look. Um, the work they did over in the special ed area is really, it's, it's gonna be a beautiful building. And, uh, we're, we're almost ready. Penny is over here right now. She loves it here. And, um, they're, they'll be working on Sally's, Shelly's offices tomorrow. So hopefully by this weekend, we'll have the central office will be over here then. So for next week. I'm really thrilled with the hiring processes that have been going on, not only at the administrative level, but at the teacher level. And, you know, I, I might give these guys a hard time and push them. I tell them, you know, you can't just go fishing. You gotta catch once in a while. You know, and, uh, so I kind of tease them about it. If you are, if you're not landing them, you're just sitting in the bed, drink a beer. So it works. But, um, last thing and the thing I'm most happy about, the central offices, Shelly, Sally and, and Penny, do so much work behind the scenes to make things run. And, uh, Sally was gonna retire and I am thrilled that she's chosen that she just can't leave those other two ladies yet. So she's gonna return for another year. So good for her.
Yes.
Okay, enough good for me.
Well, it's, it's exciting to be moving to a new office. We're getting through a lot of things that probably needed to be looked at and either disposed of or and not look to in the actual cleaning up of everything on my desk in a box and then coming over. But, um, it'll all work out and it'll all be for the good. And I like to think that I can help the transition with moving of what my job really will entail instead of changing toners and putting staples in the copying machine, you know, just lots of little things that I did because I inherited all those jobs when it was just the high school. And I never lost any of them jobs as other things changed. So it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it all plays out and who does what. And with the transition of getting that all done, then it'll be easier to train somebody to take my spot when I do leave next year. And I am leaving next year.
Yeah, so she says.
Well, I don't know. Paul said today that maybe the way the stock market is, he told me in the hall, he says, maybe it's a good thing we're not retiring right now because we may not have any money in our 401Ks. I said the school retirement will be fine, so.
Maybe.
Maybe.
You guys might have to pay more down the road, but I'm gonna about be done, so.
All right. Any foundation report?
Sure. Foundation did meet here as well for the first time, um, a week ago. I guess just like looking at, again, a couple of things to highlight, um, per the, uh, the, well, we got set up for the alumni honors committee with a distinguished alumni. We're generally recognizing three distinguished alumni. And there were five highly qualified alumni. And it was a recommendation of that committee, Sherri and Joyce, to recognize all five of them. And, and it comes from, they just talked about the diversity of just a lot of diversity, gender, age, occupations, uh, just a wide range of, of, uh, awesome things that have been accomplished, uh, from alumni, from Skylar. I guess one of the other action items, um, Dr. Hazing brought to us, um, about girl state, that there were four quality, um, applicants or, or candidates for girl state. But the, the American Legion Auxiliary that, that funds that requested some, some money or scholarship money to help fund two of them. So, so we are contributing eight, or eight hundred dollars for two of the four to go to, for the girls, go to girl state. So a couple of things that we accomplished last week.
Great.
You know, there were a lot of years when we didn't have hardly any candidates. And so the, they were thrilled now with the kids who are interested. The government class are really promoting. Um, so that's good. It's good leadership. And we're, we're, in our conversations, we were hoping that student council can be more of a student government in the future rather than, than a social club. And so if we send kids to this, that we would look at those kids also being involved because the student council, as they have a student report, that maybe if two of them came to report would be a better. because the student council, as they have a student report, that maybe if two of them came to report would be a better, would be a better program in the future rather than have one poor soul sitting up here.
Well, it's been my conversation with, with Dr. Hazing and the foundation and the rest of you guys are here, so I'll share that, 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 I guess it's kind of always been, just from, from my point of view, our student council rep, I, I'd like to, instead of just report, I'd like to hear, you know, opinions or, or them speak for the student body and for us to hear what, you know, not just to report what's, what's going on and, and for them to then go back and report to the, the student body or the student council of, you know, why, why we make some of the decisions that we do. And, and they can be involved in some of the debate if they so choose to, but it's, I know that can be kind of intimidating, but that's, and maybe that's, this is kind of one small way to help promote some of that.
Okay. Well, I think that comes to the end of our no correspondence items. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I moved it during the meeting.
Their second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, motion carries.